Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the regular meetings of the Public Finance Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successor, Successor Agency and City Council to order. City Clerk, roll call both please.
Councilwoman Warren, here. Councilwoman Warren?
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Zamora?
Here.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Members of the Public Financing Authority and Water Utility Authority receive $150 for their attendance at these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to call upon Mayor Protem Zamora to give the invocation.
You guys can please stand. Bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on this council as we meet tonight. Grant us both wisdom and compassion as we make decisions about the future of our community. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
I would like to call upon Erin Doss to lead in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Erin, would you like to come up? Tell us what school you go to, what are your hobbies, what sports you are in?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Erin Doss and I'm going to be attending Santa Fe High School as a senior next year. And I'm here on behalf of the Youth Leadership Committee. And I would say one of my favorite hobbies is walking my dog. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Erin. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda, except for the public hearing item. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, you will be given an opportunity to when the public hearing is open. The city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment in person, you will have an opportunity once the city clerk announces your name. You will have three minutes to speak. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak today?
Madam Mayor, we have six speakers. The first speaker is Stefan Wandel.
Thank you. Hi, Stefan.
Good evening. My name is Stefan Wandel, representing Golden Springs. So I wanted to speak on Agenda Item Number 11. On behalf of Golden Springs Development and the 47 tenants that our companies host, I think we wanted to express once again our concern with the proposed Business Operation Tax Update. You know, as many of you know, we've been paying attention to this for quite some time, well over a year and a half. Our concern stems with really use of monies. Our company has always supported, the city has always committed our time, our efforts, our funds into the city, and today it's no different. We are unfortunately concerned with what's being proposed right now, and it really has to do with the use of the funds. At last week's session, there was a discussion that the business license tax had not been updated in 30 years. I believe that to be true, but I don't think that's the entire picture. In 2010, the city approved Utility Users Tax that brought in $6 million, and the stated goal was to fund police and fire and other services. In 2013, an oil production tax was passed, also intended to support police, fire and other services. In 2018, 2019, Measure Y was passed proposing an additional $12 million to support police, fire and road repairs. So in total, I'm not really sure what the oil production tax was brought in, but we're talking probably over $20 million. When we look at today's budgets at the city, roughly $65 million, we're told one, maybe $2 million of that is being spent towards road repairs. Out of 65 million, when on repeated occasion, the business community of Santa Fe Springs has been made money available. We're also being asked to support a tax, and while we appreciate bits of information and an effort by city staff to provide some answers to some of the questions, there's a lot of questions that are left unanswered. We are told a detailed ordinance will be made available in the next few days, which if I'm reading the calendar well, is going to give us about a week to review what I'm assuming will be a fairly detailed ordinance. And asking the business community to review it in short time is challenging. At the risk of being repetitive, we're here to support the city, but we really want to make sure that these funds, if they're being raised, are going to be spent for the internal purpose. Apparently, every three to five years, the business community has been asked to provide more money, additional funds for large reasons.
All right. Thank you so much. We give three minutes. Thank you.
I've got some copies of the Measure Y.
Okay. Thank you. City Clerk, do we have any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Madam Mayor, next we have Jeff Hamilton.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jeff Hamilton, and I am with Goodman. And I'm here to speak on Agenda Item Number 11, the Business License Tax. The one thing I do want to note is I've been involved in some of these discussions with the business license tax over the last many, many weeks. And the one point that I want to make is Goodman has their own standpoint, and I understand many of these other businesses have their own perspective, and they do make very relevant and valid points. So what I'm here to discuss today is specific to Goodman. And so we've been working with the city for roughly a year. The city came to us and said, "We need help with our roads." And we said, "I understand, we agree with you, and we're willing to work with you to get that solved." And so when the city came to us not too long ago with their proposal of 10 cents per building, per foot, per year, and maxing that at $50,000 per year, that was palatable to us with, and I hope you guys would write this down, with a couple of exceptions. And those exceptions would be trying to prioritize that on roads, because that's how it was communicated to us, was this is going to be prioritized to roads. And we've had some discussions with Ray Cruz and some others on, it's just not feasibly possible. So if there's some way to make that mechanism to prioritize that, we would appreciate that. And the other concept, Item Number Two, would be having sort of a ratcheting system over the next three to five years, have that ratcheted, you know, 3 cents, 3 cents, 4 cents, something of that nature. So our customers and our tenants within the city have the ability to prepare for that, and it doesn't hit them all at once. And other than that, again, we appreciate the interaction with the city. We appreciate the council. We appreciate everything you guys have done, and we can support this tax. And again, we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next we have Randall Courtney.
Thank you, Randall. Could everybody that has cell phones, which is everybody, can you please turn them on silent? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. I have been involved in these talks for a while as well. I agree that the city does need to update this business license fee. I think that you could triple the current fee, and no one in business in this city would care. No one would even blink. It would just be paid. My company's always supported the city. We've supported the 50th, the 60th anniversary, red ribbon parade, Red Relay for Life. I could go on. Last month, I ran a report for my company, Didi Works, and our company's costs and expenses have gone up 26% since January 1st. That's crazy. Coming back at us with an additional tax right now, I don't know exactly what would happen to us, but I feel pretty confident saying that companies that normally would be wanting to move into the city won't because of the expense. I don't believe that the companies, there are companies here that will stay because of that. Why would they stay? They can find another city, and it would be a lot cheaper for them to move. I mean, we're talking, you know, a few miles away, and it would be done. I know that other companies that would like to relocate here due to the taxes wouldn't. I mean, we've already heard that, and you've already heard that from some of the real estate guys. I'm a little disappointed in the thought process here. In the last decade, the UUT with the $6 million, Measure Y, $12 million. Now we want to add another $6 to $10 million to take care of things that were told to the community, the police, fire, roads, every one of those things. That's how it was sold to the community, to the people that are voting here. And now then you're coming back at us again, and you want to do this again. And again, I said, "I agree, we need to update this thing." But I don't think that the people in the community that live here understand what could happen. If one of these ginormous companies decides, "That's it, I'm done," not only are you going to lose the money that we thought we were going to get from this tax, but you're going to lose the sales tax revenue from them as well. Well, what's that going to mean to the community? Fiesta's is gone, what, we're going to lose a fire station? I mean, what does that mean to us? And I think at the very least, if we do have to do this, this needs to be a special tax. I don't think that dumping it into the general fund is the right thing to do, because that money's just going to evaporate, like it always does. I mean, in the last decade, the money that we've been paying has just disappeared, because we wouldn't be doing this. Didn't.
Thank you, Randall.
Pass on this.
Next, we have Wendy Meadner.
Thank you, Wendy.
Of Tankerman Interiors. As you know, I've been involved in this since we got going. When this first was presented to the business community, it was all about roads. And we all agree, we need to improve the fee, find a way to work on the roads. But what we are begging for, and we've been pleading for, is transparency. Where's this money going to go? How much is going to go to the roads if it goes into the general fund? As Randall said, it keeps going other places. We keep paying in, let's fix this, and it goes somewhere else. Tankers, I would consider a very good corporate citizen. We contribute to the youth of Santa Fe Springs. We participate in Relay for Life, the Firefighters Memorial, Whittier Police Officers Association. I spent a large amount of my time in the past few weeks talking to our ownership. And as of this morning, their position is, we can support Model 7 full-heartedly if it's a special tax. If we know that this money is absolutely going to be spent on the roads. If it's not, Tankerman is fully prepared to remove all sales from Santa Fe Springs and move our corporate headquarters to Dallas. They will implement that if it goes to ballot as anything other than as a special tax. And to give you an idea of what that would account for, 2021, COVID, a really bad year. The amount of sales that we had, subject to sales tax, out of the Santa Fe Springs office was $62 million. Where are you going to get some $62 million to fill that hole in the general fund if we leave? I just really want you to be aware of that. And I want to speak towards last week's study session, when at the end, the mayor stated that, you know, there's an open door policy, and they want to hear from us. Back in April, I sent an email to all five council members. Within 48 hours, I had heard from three of them. Two weeks later, I sent a second email to the mayor and the mayor pro tem, asking for 10 minutes, can we talk about my concerns? And the mayor said she couldn't speak to me. The mayor pro tem had staff set up a meeting, and then that meeting was canceled within 24 hours, not postponed, no notification, just it's canceled. I'm not feeling, our business isn't feeling heard or valued. And we've been here for 22 years, and for a business our size that contributes.
Next, we have Isabel Sabranthis.
One of the residents from Maidstone. Congratulations to one of our residents for winning an award. We would win more awards on Maidstone if you would remove the trees. Just wanted to remind you about the pine trees on Maidstone Avenue that are destroying our street. I know I could win an award. Please remove the trees. That's all we're asking. Oh, and the roots too, please. Thank you.
Next, we have Phil Rounds.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. You've heard the business community talk about the proposed tax, and the residents have heard about the proposed tax. I'm here to talk tonight, you know, I've, City of Santa Fe Springs now is 65 years old, and I've lived here longer than that. I've seen the community go from oil wells to the beautiful residential and business community is today. And our forefathers designed this community with the homes, the business community. And they knew very well that the business community would support this council in this city, as it has. As earlier stated, you know, we went into a recession, and we had to cut our budget. We went to the residents for UUT tax, supported by the business community. It was passed. We got a Measure Y supported by the residents, and the business community supported that. And as stated, each time it was sold to the residents that it would help pay for a number of things, including street improvements. You know, our business community is unlike a lot of business communities. They're very supportive, along with our Chamber of Commerce. The businesses are what has made and continues to make Santa Fe Springs the city it is. It's a very desirable city to be in because of the close proximity of the freeways. And people want to stay here. But if the proposed tax were to go through tonight, as is, I think you are, as Courtney had said, you're going to lose a lot of businesses. Then what are you going to do? You're going to be losing money instead of making money. So, you know, if this is proposed, I would offer to you that maybe you don't. First of all, it should be across the board. It shouldn't be one way for the small businesses, one way for the big businesses. And then, you know what, like the water tax that was increased. It was a big chunk of money, right? But it wasn't increased one year. It was over a number of years. So why not offer, I'll offer you, why don't you do it the same way? Why don't you do it over a five-year period? And so it's easier to digest and get the businesses. And, you know, another thing that's coming to light now is it's pretty imminent. We're going to be in a recession soon. What about these businesses? They're going to be hurting. And if they're hurting, the city's going to be hurting if you implement this taxes. So, and it seems like there's a big rush to do this. You know what? Why? If all the questions aren't asked.
Madam Mayor, the next speaker is via Zoom. It would be Mike Foley.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Hi, everybody. My name's Mike Foley. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I've been involved in the commercial real estate business in Santa Fe Springs for over 40 years, and I've been involved with the process that we've talked about today. It was just Item Number 11 on the agenda today. And a lot of my associates and fellow businesspeople have spoken to a lot of the issues that I'd want to raise. I just want to let you know that we do support the city. It's a very difficult time to put more tax burden on the businesses, and businesses do have options. And I think that everybody knows that, realizes the importance of being able to be called or termed the best city or a positive city, and they've always been that. I really love the city. I love all the people that help run it. And I really believe that it's a real combination of relationship between the city and the business community that's really made it an attractive place for me to do a lot of business. I would support some sort of ratcheted process of the tax. And I'm just not clear as to why we couldn't do a special tax. If we could do a special tax that would be focused specifically on the roads and infrastructure, because I think that's really what the premise of this whole conversation started with. And I trust that everybody here will have the best interest of both the business and residential community in mind. Thank you for your time.
Madam Mayor, that concludes our speakers for today.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. I would like to now close public comments and move on to the next item. Item Number Six, Public Finance Authority Agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion for the approval of Item Number Six?
I'll move.
A second.
We have a motion by Mayor Protem Zamora, second by Councilmember Sarno. City Clerk, roll call both, please.
Councilmember Warren? Hi. Councilwoman Warren?
Hi.
Councilwoman Sarno?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Zamora?
Hi.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item Number Seven, Water Utility Authority Agenda. We have two consent items. Is there a motion for the approval of Items Number 7A and 7B?
I'll move 7A and 7B.
Second.
City Clerk, roll call both, please.
Councilwoman Warren? Hi. Councilwoman Warren?
Hi.
Councilwoman Sarno?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Zamora?
Hi.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Old Business, Item Number Eight, Water Shortage Contingency Plan, Stage Two. I would like to call on Water Utility Services Manager, Jessie Sarah.
Good evening, Council. This is an update to the city's drought response. The governor issued an executive order for all California water purveyors to increase the water reduction from a 10% to a 20%. So the city did adopt this in the Urban Water Management Plan in 2020. We do have these, we have six stages in place. So we're just following the California Governor's Executive Order. So really, the main thing added to this is prohibition of of irrigating commercial non-functional turf. So that's over there on the right. You can see on the left on your slide, Stage One. Again, it was the basic drought response plan that the city implemented years ago. We have that in place. We are responding to residents' leak reports and water waste reports. Really where this one changes again is commercial irrigation of non-functional turf. City parks, fields, that is not impacted. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the approval of Item Number Eight?
I'll move.
Second.
City Clerk, roll call both, please.
Councilwoman Warren? Hi. Councilwoman Warren?
Hi.
Councilwoman Sarno?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Zamora?
Hi.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item Number Nine, City Council Agenda. We have three consent items, A through C. Is there a motion for the approval of the City Council Consent Agenda?
I'll move A through C.
A second.
City Clerk, roll call both, please.
Councilwoman Warren? Hi. Councilwoman Warren?
Hi.
Councilwoman Sarno?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Zamora?
Hi.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public Hearing, Item Number 10, Confirmation of 2021, 2022 Weed Abatement Charges. I would like to call, I would like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard, please raise your hand via Zoom or approach the podium. And when speaking, please state your name. City Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Madam Mayor, we don't have any speakers.
All right. I would like to close the public hearing. Is there a motion for the approval of Item Number 10?
I'll move 10.
Second.
City Clerk, roll call both, please.
Councilwoman Warren? Hi. Councilwoman Warren?
Hi.
Councilwoman Sarno?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Zamora?
Hi.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Old Business, Item Number 11, Presentation of Potential Changes to the City's Business Operation Tax Ordinance. I would like to call on the City Manager, Ray Cruz.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Since February of 2021, the city has been working closely with the Santa Fe Springs Chamber of Commerce and several of its members to be open and transparent about both the city's infrastructure and other services financing needs and potential revenue sources that might bridge the city's budget gap. Since the April 20th City Council Study Session, there were many discussions regarding many options. And based on feedback from the industrial-based businesses, staff developed financial model known as Model 7, since it was accepted by most businesses. The city's consultants presented the details on Model 7 for further discussion from the City Council at the Special City Council Meeting on July 12. The council provided direction to staff to develop options for phasing in the effects of the tax modifications. Three options for phasing in the updated tax were developed by the city's consultant, HDL, and will be presented tonight. Furthermore, a question was also raised regarding how the proposed new rates compared with other jurisdictions. A summary of the current rates, proposed Model 7 rates, and other jurisdiction rates will also be presented. So tonight, we need direction from the City Council to determine if they want to move forward with Model 7 or some version of it on the November election ballot. Therefore, we need council to formally provide that direction so our special counsel attorney can finalize the ordinance and resolution that will need to be adopted by the City Council at its August 2 meeting. We also need council to provide the authority for our consultant from props and measures to send out an informational piece mailer to the community this week about the potential measure. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Eric Myers from HDL to go over the options for phasing the business license tax over a period of time and a summary that compares the current Model 7 and other jurisdictions, business license taxes. So Eric, you're up.
Thank you, Manager Cruz. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Great. So we'll start with, we took a look at three different sort of prototypical phase-in options. The first was a 20, 40, 100%. So you get a little bit of a, it's lower on the front end. And for years one and two, steadier growth with a bit of a balloon at the back end. You can see here on the screen that we're sharing kind of the impacts to that on revenue at this point in time. So estimated tax revenue for year one at that 20% would be significantly lower in terms of the gross receipts. Not surprisingly, that's at 20% of the estimated revised rates. And then it just steps up each year, getting you back to around the revenue numbers that you're currently in on the gross receipt side, and then stepping up the industrial business activities, or excuse me, the industrial business activities staying solid throughout. So if you could advance the slide to the next slide. The second option was, okay, let's just make it an even application, an even phase in, so 33, 67%, and then 100%. Again, you can see on this green line here, total non-industrial, what the total impact of that would be in the gross receipts arena and how that steps up. The advantage of this is that there is no balloon payment. Relatively speaking, the disadvantage Relatively speaking, the disadvantage is it's going to start you at a little bit higher than you're going to get with the prior version. And then the third version, if you would please advance the slide, is a fifty seventy-five, one hundred. So it jumps up early and then sort of tapers to an even pace of twenty-five percent increase in years two and three. So those are the three phase-in options that we wanted to present to you tonight. Obviously, the exact details could be tweaked at your direction. But those are the basic three approaches of pay early, pay evenly, pay later in terms of the phase in and how it would impact the businesses. If we could advance to the next slide. The, the other item I wanted to, we wanted to bring back to you was a, a more complete comparison for you to review to make that, I think there were a number of questions last time about where would we be higher. I do want to point a few things out as you're interpreting this model. We did try to color code it. I hope that's not too busy visually for you. This darker orange is the area that is the highest for that given row. And the lighter is the second highest tax for that given row. And the green is the lowest tax rate for that given row. We added some additional examples. Here, there's a restaurant, fifty employees, four thousand square feet and two million dollars. That was a specific example that was requested that we address. So we added that. We've also added some larger industrial businesses or warehouses here as well. These are not actual businesses. It's important that I remind you of that. For confidentiality purposes, we're not pulling actual businesses. We're pulling some businesses that are, you know, instructive for you to see the difference in rates. And, you know, something like this might be in your business ecosystem right now. You will note, I think, well, a couple of other, one other item. Several, because this question came up, how did the rates compare? Many that we're comparing to are not on what I would consider a modernized gross receipts basis. They have a regressive tax structure. And you'll see that in some of the larger examples that we've added, that there might be, you know, in certain situations, you know, you're actually getting a lower tax rate as the larger your gross receipts are. So some of your comparison cities, in fact, have this kind of regressive tax structure built into them. The other thing I do want to point out is that in this column, Model Seven Full, which is the hundred percent Model Seven, you will see that there are three colored squares here, starting with the doctor's office. So the city, even at the proposed Model Seven rate, would be the highest of the comparison group for the doctor's offices. So that's a professional grouping under gross receipts. And then also for a very large, you know, a ten million dollar retailer, you would also still be the highest at that seventy-five cents rate. So that's why those are color coded there. You'd be the second highest on a smaller eighty thousand square foot at the five, excuse me, at the ten cents per square foot. So those were the key items that I wanted to address with you tonight and just present these. And I will remain here and be available for questions should they be posed.
And Madam Mayor, all the consultants are online, so is staff available for the council's questions at this point.
All right. Do we have any questions from our council? Any concerns, any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of concerns. As we can see that, you know, from this graph, that some of these prices are going to go up five hundred to seven hundred percent increase. And that's a lot of money for a lot of small businesses. And those are the people that are, who we are really affecting now. So with, for me right now, I, I would not want to disturb our businesses to where it helps them grow or even Wendy from Tangram to let them move out of our community and lose revenue because we're trying to make pennies to save dollars. And it doesn't make sense for us, guys. So for me, if we do the Model Seven, I would like to see a fifty percent, half of whatever the Model Seven is, so fifty percent of that, and carry that over for the next three years, three to five years. Or, I, I mean, even though I know we need this for our budget and to update our business license fees, but every year, we can't just keep taxing our, our business communities because pretty soon our business communities, we're not going to have a community to support the residents. So I think we need to be very mindful of that, please.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else that wants to make a comment?
Real quick, I guess my question would be to Travis. I know Wendy Meter brought up from Tangram that they make sixty-two million. How much do we get from that? As our tax, or what do you know that we get from them personally as a city?
I believe that'd be around six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand. So we're looking at a seven million dollar tax, tax to business community. This is not taxing any of the residents at all. It's taxing the business community so they can start paying their fair share for our roads. The roads that you guys drive on, the ones with the potholes, the ones that sometimes mess up the alignment in your cars, and you guys have complaints. So not only that, what they're not understanding is we need more policing. You know, we can't wait for gas cone or the recall. We have to do what we have to do to protect our residents now. And when we look at the policing, we just added two new police officers. And these are traffic officers, so they can be around the streets. Because guess what? I've been getting several calls, time in, time out, what's, you know, the response time on our, on our policing, why is it so slow when it comes to our residents? Why? Because they're always in our business community. Why? Because we have a lot of criminals that are going to our businesses breaking in. Because you know, nothing, no crime will be committed, right? Plain and simple. Catalytic converter, we did, we did something today. And when it comes to the catalytic converter, you know, why? Because we want to harsher penalties, because we have to protect the working class. We have to protect our business community, you know, better lighting. We need to have better lighting out there. And, you know, when it comes to our streets, when it comes to our sidewalks, we have individuals who are talking about curbing gutter. If you, and, and our curbing gutters, and even when it comes to our trees, you know, tree removals, tree stumps, there, there are things that we have to do. You know, last year, we talked about a general plan. And guess what happened? The business community said, hey, if you work with us, we'll work with you when it comes to your guys' tax. As you guys can see, they're not working with us. They're not working with us at all, you know? And that's okay, because I'm going to give you a little lesson. Ready? Perfect calculation when it comes to the geography of Santa Fe Springs. And I'll start off this way. We are literally in a perfect place when it comes to geography. If you look at our freeways, if you look down, we go down south, where we're located, five, six oh five freeway, right? And then if you go down south, you have the one oh five freeway. You got the ninety-one, four oh five, twenty-two, accessible to our business community. Let's go, let's go north now. What do you have up north? Now you got the sixty, the ten, two-ten, accessible to our business community. It's kind of like this great planet that we live on, that God perfectly placed us in the right direction. Because two degrees closer to the sun, we'd burn and die. Two, two degrees closer away towards the, towards, away from the sun, we'd freeze. Plain and simple. When it comes to the geography of where we're located, it is the best for these businesses. And we have people lined up that are going to be saying, hey, if they would like to leave, yeah, do we want them to leave? No, we don't. But that's their choice. Our job is to fight for our residents, so you don't have to pay the tax, so they have to pay it. Plain and simple. Why put the burden on our residents? Look at our water tax. What happened? Why, how many of you guys out here in the audience felt the pinch when it came to the water? All of a sudden, you guys saw your water bills and how much that increased. Want to know why? It's because people up here couldn't make the decision. We had somebody who spoke, who was a former council member, former mayor, couldn't make the decisions that was right for you guys. If they would have done it right from the very beginning, two percent a year, two percent each time, guess what? You wouldn't have felt it, but because they couldn't make these decisions. We can't just sit up here and just not make a decision for you guys. We have to do what's fair. Recently, somebody can't, you know, same individual that spoke said, hey, with regards to a tree for his son-in-law, said, I stopped it. I never stopped it. City manager even wrote him a letter and said that he stopped it. So guess what? All of a sudden, they want to point blame, but you know what? The blame is, look in the mirror. Blame is in yourself. Why? Because you can't make a decision. And when it comes to your family and friends and business community, you're going to always bend for them. You're not here to be a puppet. We're here to do a job, to be a public servant for our residents, plain and simple. We're either going to pass this for you guys, because guess what? Some of the things that we're looking at when it comes to our, our roads. Other things that we want to put in, license plate reader cameras. What is a license plate reader camera? You guys remember that we all, we had these shootings on Dammie Street, and everybody was getting scared. We put these license plate reader cameras. It read, it literally read, when cars came in, whether they were stolen, they'd get pinged. All of a sudden, we had no, no more shootings. That's because we stood up to make a decision like that. Well, now we're trying to get these license plate reader cameras throughout the whole community. Why is that? So if anybody comes into our city, it's going to ding them. It's literally going to ding and let our with your PD know. Because this is what happens. Most criminals are not going to come in their own car. They're going to probably come in a stolen car. Then what are we always watching out for? How many of you guys are sleeping at night, wondering, man, is my catalytic converter still there? All of a sudden, you get up, you start looking out the window, start unlocking the door. You, you, you hear noises, you go out there. Well, guess what? It's you and your neighbors that have to protect each other, bottom line. So it's our job to protect you guys. And we're either going to have the courage to vote against them. Because guess what? How much their property value went up in the last couple of years, six, seven years that they didn't mention? A hundred and fifty percent to two hundred percent. We're talking millions and billions of dollars. That's how the rich stay rich. And guess who, and guess what happens to us? We're just here, sitting here. And you know what? I know that you guys may look at it, you guys don't, you know, didn't come for this. You came for a beautification and I, you know, but guess what? It's a perfect opportunity. And I'm glad God planned this, this way. Because we're, 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 we're doing our part for the beautification of our community, of our city. We have two more officers. We have these license plate reader cameras. Now of a sudden, we're going to also have, when it comes to their signage. We get people driving down, driving down Pioneer, just in, in a big rig. They see the signs, but they don't care. You know, so, you know, we talked about, hey, I talked to Noe, I know he's not here, but let's go, you know, Serito has signage where it has lights around their sign. We have other, in, in Bell Gardens, I told them about the lights. It just, it says you're going too fast, too slow, whatever it may be. But it, you know, it almost looks like it's taking a photo. The majority of our tickets, when it comes to people getting tickets, traffic tickets, traffic violations in our community, are outsiders. They don't even live in our community. That's why you constantly see them speed down your roads where everybody's all of a sudden asking for what? Can we get speed bumps? Can we get speed bumps? Can we get speed bumps? Plain and simple. We have to do these things. Yeah, is it difficult? It is. But this is why we're up here. Same way you take pride in your yard. Well, I take pride in the city of Santa Fe Springs. So let me tell you this, I will always fight for you guys. Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter what they may say, what they may think. Guess what? Are, you know, we're here to argue, to agree to disagree, whatever it may be, but guess what? We love this city. And I know they love this city because they've benefited and made plenty of money. This is a great city to do business and to live. Thank you, guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam. Is this tax needed? Very much so. Very much so. Do you want to put it on the, on the ballot for the residents to make that decision? It's only right you guys do, are the residents. Have we postponed it a long time to have this? Yes, we have. But people don't understand, yes, our, our businesses have benefited from here, whether we're friends or whether we're not friends. But that's your choice to have your business here. It's your choice to succeed, to work long hours, to make your business where it's at. The rich get richer, the poor stay poorer. Sometimes it's because they work more or they have different meanings or stuff like that. But for us to make it to this point, to, to the severity, they're willing to work with us. They've all said they were really to work with us. I've heard it. They've told us. But I understand when you guys say not all at one time. There's a recession. There is that. There's going to be a recession. We know that. I remember Measure Y. What city has a chamber backing up Measure Y and walking and fighting for it, even though it's going to affect you guys? We have an awesome chamber. We have great, an industrial residence here. There are residents as well as our, as our, our people that own homes. They take pride in their business as well. Do we need it? Most definitely. Model Seven is good. But my opinion, we should break it up. We should break it up in five years and move forward. We're not just going to throw this right at them. Yeah, they might be millionaires. They might have that, but that's not our place to decide where they're, what they make or not make. We should give them, you know, make it a five-year span at a twenty percent. They're willing to do it. They're willing to work with us. They're involved with us. And make it a special tax. I think, I think what the problem is too, is the fact that they've helped assess the Measure Y, and it's going to be for policing in roads. We can tell you all of us here, we've been wanting it for roads. We, excuse me, we all drive on the same streets. Our roads are not fixed. We know that. Policing, yes, we got more officers. Yes, we are doing that. But I feel if we make this a special one, I think this will show more transparency. It's going to show the residents also as well, what you guys are voting for, that you're usually going to say, okay, yeah, we passed this, but this is going to be under a certain ta, a certain measure, that you're going to see this money go directly toward the roads. It's not just, it's, we're not just saying the road, this money's going to go for the police. It's going to go for fires. It's going to go for this, that. We should make it only for the roads. We should make it a special tax only for the road, you know, Measure B, A, whatever, it doesn't matter. But make it only for the roads. That ways, we're being transparent and showing you that we are doing our job up here and where this money is going. That way, you guys see when all the taxes are going. And then, you know, Travis, you can give us reports on a quarterly basis. If this passes, you would see how much money is going to roads and its accountability on our part, that the money is going toward the roads. I think the residents would like that. The residents would see it with this tax that they're passing. And plus, I think the businesses would appreciate the fact of, okay, yeah, we like Measure Seven, I mean, the Model Seven. We like that. And we're okay, give us a time to do it. The last thing I want is our big businesses to be leaving out of here, because we're going to have empty businesses. The great thing about our city is the fact that any of us council can go to any of the businesses, ninety percent of the time, we ask for something. You guys are going to help us. You guys are going to help us for the firemen's, like, you know, things that Wendy said, the Relay for Life. There's other things that they do also. And I wouldn't want to ruin that relationship that we have. Yes, should have been done a long time ago, most definitely. Should have been done ten years ago, seven years ago, most definitely. It should have been done last year, two years ago. We know that. But let's not punish the businesses for our mistake or us not moving quicker on this. So I'm okay with the Model Seven. Let's do it over a five-year span of twenty percent and make it a, just a certain tax so our residents know what they're voting for. They don't think that their money is going toward, you know, police or this, this is going just for the roads. That way, I think the residents will know what they're voting for. And I think the, the residents, I mean, the industrial residents say, okay, we're going to help you guys. We're going to do this. This is what our money is going for. That just, that's my, my voice on this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, John.
Yeah, okay. So a lot of stuff up here. I don't think there's any doubt that businesses want to contribute to our city. We, as residents, do benefit from these businesses being here. We did have that water utility tax, Measure Y, and it all went to our own infrastructure. The, you know, I agree that this could be a specific road tax specifically for the roads, the way it was originally put together. And, you know, I'm not trying to disrespect the consultants that have worked so hard to, to put this together. That we went from Model One to all the way down to Seven, and now we've got a little, you know, sub- Model one, two, all the way down to seven, and now we got a little, you know, subsets of, uh, Model Seven. Bottom line is that we do need, uh, money for, for our roads. I think at this point in time, you know, fire and police, we're doing okay. Um, we can obviously use, uh, more, uh, because, you know, that is all of our priorities here to be, um. For public safety. But if we do move with this. Um, you know, one thing that I don't want the business community to feel is that we'll be, we're taxing success. I'm a business owner here as well, so, you know, I'm, I'm both sides of the, of the podium here. Uh, but we do need. Funds for, for infrastructure. There's a couple of factors that do come into play and, you know, some concerns, of course, you know, we are kind of getting through a recession right now, we're just bouncing back off of COVID. Uh, but we need to move forward. I don't want to risk any businesses leaving, uh, because if businesses leave, it's also, uh, revenue loss through taxes and there's also a job loss. So I think, um, one thing that we can do is, you know, there is, uh, seems to be a need for urgency, but we have to do this the right way as well. Um, if we can't come to, uh, some agreement, you know, I don't want to wait, uh, perhaps another year, but if we could get it all done, put our heads together and come to an agreement. I think we can do something now. But if we can't get this just right. Then, you know, we do have another year. Not that I want to wait another year, but, you know, we just want to make sure that we get this done right. It's gonna be benefiting everybody, businesses and residents alone. And, um, you know. We're up here, but we live here too, we're residents just like everybody else here. And then the business residents, they may not live in the city, but they're also, uh, you know, in industrial residence, and they consider this their home too, this is where they make their living. So if we do move along with this one, I maybe, uh, consider, uh, modification of the cap perhaps. Maybe stretch this over a, anywhere from a three to five-year, uh, period. If this does not go through, something just kind of popped in my head, it may not be, uh, it may be too late to do something like this, but. Um, businesses already know that there's gonna be some kind of tax increase. And if there is gonna be a tax increase, um, maybe they could kind of pay it forward for now. Um, and it could be like a credit and we can use that for, uh, to use out on the roads. Once we determine what the exact tax is, if they overpaid, they get a refund. If they didn't pay enough, then they get credit to what the, what tax should be, but it's just some of them just throwing out, there's. You know, there's options, there's a lot of things we could do, but bottom line is, I don't know, we do have to do this, I think we have to do this the right way and, um. Uh, you know, we, we want to keep our businesses here, because businesses are what built. Uh, you know, the, you know, uh, a great little town that we have here. That is all I've got for now.
Thank you, John. And, okay, I just wanted to say, um. Measure Y, we had a fifty million dollar deficit. We don't have a deficit right now. Uh, I saw the signs, we worked hard, uh, the residents worked hard to get this in so that we can make sure that we don't have no deficit. Uh, is there risk? There is, there's always risk, everywhere you go, there's, we have to take risks in life. Uh, I came over here, uh, I've, I've been on council for four years. The residents, uh, that's. That's who I work for, uh, Business Industrial, I work for them too. Uh, I get calls every day, okay? I do have an open door policy, by the way. The only time you don't speak to me is when you do not give me a time schedule, but I do have an open door policy. Residents have called me about their houses shaking. The lighting, we don't have enough lighting, uh, Danby is, is a good one, we've had shootings. Uh, I tried to get cameras for our residents. Tree removal, we fought for tree removal because of safety reasons, I even went over to, uh, uh, the. The street that was requesting the tree removal because of infrastructure, the, the street picking up, sidewalks picking up. And guess what? I ended up falling and hurting myself. See, these are the damages that happen because we wait too long. We wait too long, ten years we waited on main stone. Uh, we could have done it maybe seven or eight years ago, but we didn't do it, we wait too long, we cannot wait any longer. We, uh, programs, we have people that want to shut our programs down. We, we don't want to shut our programs down, our residents need our programs, our residents need programs for our seniors, our residents need programs for our. Our residents, our residents need programs for our youth. I don't want to shut programs down, I don't want to wait, we cannot wait any longer, we do need the streets fixed. We just got, we just got complaints last week on Pioneer, the, the big trucks come in, the big trucks coming into the industrial. They'd rather pay the ticket. And jeopardize our safety than to go down the right roads. Why do they do that? Because they, they just pay the ticket and move on, it's easier for them. Our residents don't like that, our residents want us to get traffic officers and officers that will protect us, how do we do that? We have to have this special tax with this, this general tax, I'm sorry, not special tax. We have to do something, we cannot, we can't wait any longer. It's, it's for the safety of our residents, do we want to shut programs down? No, we don't. Do we want to, um, uh, risk our residents getting hurt on streets because we're waiting ten years? For the infrastructure, what do we have to do? Where, where are we going with this? So our job, it is like our, um. My peers up here, we have to make a decision tonight. So what do we do? Uh, do we appease our industrial and, um, make it a special tax? Well. I want, I want our city manager to talk to us in reference to what is a general tax and what is a special tax. But if we focus just on infrastructure, well, what about all of our other programs? For our residents, you know, that's what we work for. We work over here for our residents to make sure that they have the best quality of life, that's why I got elected here. I didn't get elected, uh, for. Anybody else but to serve our residents and to serve our community, which is our industrial too, but you voted me in. And you voted me in to do a job for you, you and you. And I'm doing my job, I have to make sure that you're safe when you go home at night, I have to make sure that our. Infrastructure is, uh, is safe, I have to make sure that we have enough police officers to protect you. And how am I gonna do that? We need this tax, we need money so that we can protect you. And I'm glad that you're here. Because everybody knows here how hard I fought to get where I'm at for you, you and you, I fought for you. And I'll continue to fight for you. But I need you to understand, we're not taxing our residents. This is the industrial, and again, I tell you, all of our residents and all of our industrial, because there's, there's a lot of you here. You call me, you will get an answer, if you didn't get an answer, it's because. You didn't make time, your, your schedule is busy just like mine, so I just want to make it very clear. So we have to make a decision tonight. It's imperative that we get our. Programs, our infrastructure, our police officers, our safety, we have to make sure that we got the big picture. Uh, yeah, we need our streets fixed. But we also need our programs, we need our, we need our. Safety, we need our police officers, it's, it's not just infrastructure. So I just wanted to make sure that I'm very clear that I am working for you, the residents, you voted me in, I'm gonna do the best job that I can. To make sure that you have the best quality of life. Thank you.
And just to add real quick to, uh, another thing that we're looking at is a prosecutor, so we're looking at a joint venture with the. Uh, city of Whittier, because we have Whittier PD, our prosecutor, what that will do is that we're not gonna depend on Gascon. But that's not gonna be a pretty penny, it's gonna be what, five hundred thousand? Um, uh, a year, if I'm not mistaken, and that's the thing, we have to make these decisions to put, to make sure your safety is upheld. Um, you know, and I know that our chamber is always helping us out, um, we have that relationship and, you know, and we do contribute. The city of Santa Fe Springs contributes to the chamber, we give them an allowance of a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, you know, you have to understand, so of course they're on our, you know, we're all gonna have that great relationship. You know, and, you know, like I said, it's just one of these things that we have to do what's right, not only for our city, our residents. Our policing, our fire, you know, our streets, uh, our lighting. Uh, there's so many different things that we can go down the list, curbing gutters, uh, sidewalks, there's, you know, even when it comes to seniors. You know, our senior citizens, making sure that we have adequate programming and, and, you know, and when it comes to specialties, even when it comes to Down syndrome, we have. Transportation for Down syndrome and seniors, we do a lot of different things that other cities don't do. But we have to make sure that we have the funding to continue to pay into it, that's why it's a general tax. You know? I mean, no matter what, we're here to make a decision. I know people in the past, it was difficult, you know, some were able to make that decisions and others just sat up here. You know, perfectly fine, that's their choice. But other than that, you know, this is why we have an election coming up this year. No matter what, it's so you voters can decide who belongs here and who doesn't. Plain and simple. You guys have made choices before and you, you know, and here we go, we have a, we have three seats. That are opening up. Three seats and it makes it easier, just, you know, this is our democracy in our community, our democracy.
This is not, this is not a political thing where you're putting up the election and stuff, I'm sorry.
I know that Bill, you know, told you to say something, so I could tell, it's already raised your hand, and I'm glad that you guys are little puppets and they're gonna follow.
I'm sorry for that, you guys.
This is why we're gonna have.
Alright, guys, come on.
It's okay, this is why we do what we do.
This is not. This is where you need to step up and say, stop disrespecting.
Well, so let's just.
Alright, let's take a vote, guys, what do you guys want to do?
I asked you a question about our, I would like you to define our general. And our special tax.
Yeah, a general tax, like pays for general. Uh, purposes and, and our general fund and be things like police, fire, community services, planning, public works. A special tax would go to a special project, special program or a task, but we have our special council back here, with a, probably can give a little more of a legal definition of that.
Thank you. Um, yeah, basically, um, uh, California law makes a strict distinction between general and special taxes. Um, a business license tax like this can be either general or special, though in practice, they nearly always are general taxes. Um, basically, a general tax is a tax where the proceeds go into your general fund. And you can budget, use the money, um, as you wish for any municipal purpose. Setting it during your normal budget process each year, along with, um, all the other general funds. A special tax is a tax that goes into a special fund, is available only for a specific purpose. And that specific purpose is whatever is set in the ordinance that's been approved by the voters. And cannot be changed. Um, there are a couple of legal implications here, um, first is that a. Special tax has to be approved by two-thirds of the voters, a general tax only requires majority vote. Uh, second is that there's some, some restrictions on when you can put the different kinds of taxes on the ballot. A, uh. A general tax can only go on the ballot if it's a ballot where there are council seats on, um, on the ballot also. So if you don't put the general tax on this November ballot. Your next opportunity would be November twenty twenty-four, I believe. Um, on the other hand. Um, and the only way to get around that would be if there is a unanimous declaration of an emergency by the city council. Um, a special tax, uh, can be at any election, but as I say, it does require a two-thirds vote of the people to approve.
And what's your expertise? This is, uh, when it comes to the decision, what's your recommendation that's the easiest? And the one that you see would probably be best fit for us?
Well, like I say, it's very unusual to have a business license tax be a special tax. Um, also, in this case, you are replacing your current business license tax, which is a general tax. With this new tax, so if the new tax is a special tax. Then you would be actually reducing the amount of money that's coming into your general fund, because you'd be losing the money from your current business license tax. Um, and also, in general, um. Earmarking a very large amount of money. Especially amount of money, it's like a business license tax. Towards one purpose is usually not the greatest idea, um, the reason for that is that, uh. This tax is something that's going to be on your books for probably forever. Um, and making any change to it requires going back to the voters. So if you earmark this towards, uh, towards roads. Um, if there comes some time when you have some higher priorities. You can, it's essentially impossible to change, or not impossible, but you need to go back to the voters. Get another two-thirds vote to change it. Um, so typically, these sorts of taxes are, are done as general taxes. Um, al- also, I think there's a concept that, uh, business license taxes are usually thought of as being something that. The businesses are paying in order to support all of, all city operations, so limiting it to. One specific thing, uh, would be, uh, perfectly legal, but would be also be unusual.
Um, how long has, oh, how long has your expertise, how long have you been an expert in this field?
Uh, I've been a lawyer now for, uh, twenty-two years and revenue laws, what I did.
So we're looking at somebody who's an expert, who's telling us. To do the general fund tax. But yet we have individuals stating.
We have, we have to do this as a general, a general, uh. General fund tax, because if not, then the money that we make right now on our business license fees goes to the general fund. So if we take that away, then we lose money to our general fund and it just slips over to a special tax. What I suggest we do is, just like what we should be doing with Measure Y. But with this, we can do like a CIP list. With, let's say, we, we know we're gonna get four million dollars this year, let's do a CIP list of, of certain streets. Maybe thirty percent of that money goes to those streets every single year, and then the rest goes into our general fund. For police officers, for our programs.
You broke up, Jay.
Uh, if I, if I could just address the legal issue that was brought up there, uh. Uh, note that to, if you're going, wanna formally restrict yourself to using.
Businesses that we're not just gonna throw it all into, you know, and, and not pay attention to the roads again.
And Jay, just to let you know, uh, you broke up in mid-conversation now.
Oh, sorry. Uh, sorry, guys, but.
One more time.
So I believe that we should. Ear, not earmark. But a percentage, just like we do with our CIP program, we put those into roads, so if we want to say we want to take. Thirty, forty percent of the money and make sure we put it towards the roads. And we have a list of roads that we're gonna do each year, that's how the businesses will know, these are the roads that we have, this is when we want to do them. And this is how we're gonna do it every year. And that way, the rest of the money goes into our general fund. For our programs, police and everything else.
You know, we do have a hundred and ten million dollar road repairs, right?
Well, yeah, but that's what I'm saying, so you're not, but you're, what you're saying right now, Don, you're not putting all that money, you're gonna put into a general fund. Where we pay for police, curb and gutter, so the businesses want us to put it all to the roads. We're saying we don't want that. So if we have a hundred and ten million dollar deficit in our roads and infrastructure, then we should put all that money to the roads. But you're saying you're using it for programs and police and curb and gutters.
Okay, so when this, then when this first started, it was, um, it was supposed to be a tax for roads, that's it, and years back, it was supposed to start. And I'm actually the one who created, you know, brought, brought the idea up, and then it just kept evolving and changing to different things. I mean, my thing is, as long as we do a general tax. General fund tax, so we know it's easier to get the votes, you know, because it's a general, you know, we're looking at fifty percent plus one. I mean, and not only that, I mean, like, you know, like, like our expert is saying, he's literally saying it's, you know, we're better off doing the general fund. I have no problem if we do, not, not earmark, but if we, you know, we already know we're gonna be working on certain roads. But if you ever notice, the roads that always get fixed first are always by the business community, what about the roads over here by our residents? I mean, we have to make sure that all across the board, it's for everyone.
I just want to address one, um, legal issue that's come up here, which is that. If we legally obligate future councils to spend a portion of this money on roads, then that would convert it into a special tax. So, um, you can, um, you know, state, the council could certainly state its intent that they'd like that to happen. But you can't legally obligate future councils.
And, and Madam Mayor, uh, we have Joy Coomer, I just want to give all information, so Joy, who does, um, measures up and down the state. And has given us some, um, information about when you put something on as a special tax versus a general tax, what those. Kind of odds are for those to pass, could, could you give us a little input, Joy, on, on that?
Sorry, I had to unmute there, yes, yes, can you hear me? Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, good after, good evening, council members, uh, Joy Coomer, I was there at our last council meeting. Um, happy to be joining tonight, I, I would just concern, uh, concur with everything that. Uh, Mark has already said about. Both business license taxes generally going to, uh, well, more often going to the general fund, because. the business community has a variety of needs that are addressed through the general fund, whether it's public safety, public works, or other things and other services that the city provides. And so that is why it is most often, uh, used for general fund services and not directed to a special tax. It is true that oftentimes special taxes or that it is true that special taxes require a two thirds vote while a general tax only requires a fifty percent plus one. You know, we, we certainly tested a general tax in all of our voter surveys with the community. We saw that there was a wide community support for a general tax to support all of the city services, not just one particular issue. Though roads did rise near the top of things that the community wanted to support, they also said that there were many other things that were very important to them, the city continued doing. You are a city that is very active in your community. You provide a lot of services, which you've all already mentioned tonight. So for all those reasons, it makes the most sense that your existing business license tax, which is a general fund tax, would in the future become a general tax and a business license tax again. You do have a set needs for roads. I know there is a very comprehensive report about the needs for roads right now. I think there is a way to, to do different, um, things later that put priorities on roads, specifically through your budget process, uh, that won't tie the hands of your future councils, as Mark just said. You know, happy to answer other questions, but what we saw in the voter survey is that while people care deeply about the roads, they also care about all the services people, um, already receive because of the city. And they, they do believe that these funds should be used for all those different services, whether it's police, fire, public safety, public works, or community events, which we, you know, even saw that the Aquatic Center, which I know the city has great need to do a rebuilding of the, um, and repair of the Aquatic Center, that also rated very high. This money that generated from the business license tax could help that Aquatic Center as well in the future. So.
So is there any way we can do since we see that's where, of course, we all want to better our city, but we know that we need our roads. Is there any which way we can to put that for the roads? Something or, or like in the SAP, like something that we can actually put it somewhere like in our SAP, something I think that would, that would make it easier on the, on, on everyone, like just to make sure some of it goes to the roads, for sure.
Yeah, I, I think I liked what Joy said is that I think we can't do that legislatively during the elections process, but during the budget cycle, we can say, yes, we're gonna put X number into roads and, and, and we can have a long discussion on that and what our priority is. And I, I think we owe it to the business community to put it there. That's where they, we started, that's where they want it. But I think that's the place to do it. And I'm okay with that.
So could I say something, guys? I, I just think that, you know, we need this money, we need the, and, and it sucks that we always have to tax our, our businesses because you don't wanna bite the hand that feeds you guys all, feeds us all the time. We wanna be in good gracious with everyone, our residents and our businesses. Because if they leave, then we, we do lose programs. The same way redevelopment went away, we had to figure out how to make more money, we went to taxing. But for this, I suggest we do a five-year commitment, a five, over the next five years, twenty percent every year with Model Seven. That way, everybody can get acclimated with, uh, the raise of the tax every year and see where their businesses land. And then it gives us a sense of, you know, stability that we know for the next five years, these are the incomes coming in. We're not pushing anybody out. And then internally, we can figure out an earmark like the CIP for roads and streets and, and everything that we wanna do with these, with the money as it comes in. That's my, that's my suggestion.
And you know, we always earmark things for the roads either way, so you know that's.
Hundred percent, yes, that's right.
So we know that. And you know, the thing that I was talking about, instead of, you know, five years, I was talking about three years. I'm willing to meet you at the middle, twenty-five percent each year. Then we'll do four years.
All right, I'm, I'm okay with twenty-five percent. Let's just do twenty-five percent over the next four years. It's, it's long overdue, thirty years, we can't keep not, uh.
Yeah, it's over thirty years, yeah.
Yes, so we, we need to do something, you know, if we don't, then we just put ourselves behind even another two more years. So I'm okay with twenty-five percent then. I don't know how everybody else feels.
We get a clarification if that's only for the, um, grocery receipts businesses or for all businesses, um, that we're gonna give that twenty-five percent ramp up?
We'll just do it across the board.
Okay, just wanted to make that sure, be that clear.
Do you wanna make that motion then?
I'll move to make the, for the next four years, twenty-five percent and of Model Seven, uh, for all, uh, the, for everyone. The grocery receipts and the professional side of it.
Yeah.
The net, yeah.
Per square foot.
I'll second.
Okay, do we need, do we need a roll call vote?
Um, yes, let's go ahead and do a vote, but I would like to ask Mark and Eric if they need any more detail than what was just expressed.
I, I think we have what we need. And what you're doing tonight is you're giving, um, Eric and I direction on how draft will we bring back to you um, at, uh, I believe your first council meeting in August, is that right?
August second, yes. And Madam Mayor, can I ask for a friendly amendment? One thing we wanna give direction to, uh, props and measures to put out a mailer this week to inform the public what this measure is gonna be, that she's working on that now. We wanna give her the authority to go ahead and do that.
Yes.
I, I would like her to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so. We need a roll call vote.
Just wanna be clear, uh, before we do this, uh, everything that was made. So this is gonna be an incremental tax over the next four years, twenty-five percent at a time, um, in the general fund. And then we'll be able to have some kind of, um, CIP committee to prioritize our true needs, bring it back to the general council, and then we'll decide, you know, where the, the needs are. So it'll be for roads, cameras, speed bumps, well, maybe not, but, um, programming, anything else. But you know, this way, you know, you know, like was mentioned up here, um, our residents are priority, but you know, our business, uh, partners are, are too. And so if, uh, that is what was said, then I agree with it.
Yes, yes, we are all special. So now we're gonna do the roll call vote, please. I mean, did you have a comment before?
I just wanna confirm with the original motion maker and second that you're okay with the addition of authorizing the mailers.
Yes, I am.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, may I take roll call?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Um, yes, even though I wish it was a fight, but if we meet in the middle with the four.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Sarno?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Zamora?
Aye.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, we're going into new business, item number twelve, introduction of ordinance number one, one, two, three, adding chapter one, three, seven to the municipal code pertaining to the unlawful possession of catalytic converters. I would like to call on Director of Police Services, Dino Torres.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, thank you for noting that in the attachment to this report, uh, it had said it was one, 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 five, but, but thank you. There was a clerical error and now it's, um, one, one, uh, two, three. So good, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Adding this ordinance, uh, to the municipal code would help, uh, law enforcement combat catalytic converter theft. Uh, as we know, catalytic converters contain precious metals and that is why thieves are targeting them. So this ordinance makes it unlawful for a person to possess any catalytic converter, not attached to a vehicle, unless they have proper documentation that they are in lawful possession of it. And so that's what it is. It's a misdemeanor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dino. Are there any, is there any discussion or motion for the approval of item number twelve?
No, I'm just glad that we're being proactive with this and, you know, so I'll move. Second.
Okay, I would like to call on the city attorney to read the title of ordinance number one, one, two, three.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council and audience. This is ordinance number one, one, two, three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Santa Fe Springs, adding chapter one, three, seven to title thirteen of the Santa Fe Springs Municipal Code pertaining to the unlawful possession of catalytic converters.
Thank you. City clerk, roll call vote, please. Councilmember Martin?
Councilmember Martin had to step away.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Sarno?
Um, I just heard his, his battery, uh, was running out, so he may not be able to be on any longer.
Mayor Protim Zamora?
Aye.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye. Also, uh, Dino, I wanted to find out about those cameras too for our residents. So on a side note, can we get together? Maybe I know we are talking about that.
Sure, if you're, if you're discussing the ALPRs?
Uh, the, the rings for everyone's houses.
Sure, sure, we can, we can discuss that.
Thank you. All right, uh, now, what you've all been waiting for. Item number thirteen, presentations. All right, item number thirteen, thirteen A will be moved to the next meeting. We're going to thirteen B, recognition of the two thousand twenty-two beautification award recipients. I would like to call upon Library Services Manager, Deborah Rea.
Here at the Advisory Committee takes the lead in organizing, judging and selecting the beautification awards for homes and businesses. The beautification awards are prestigious rec, recognition for both home and business owners who take pride in their properties. The program shows visitors and neighbors that the City of Santa Fe Springs recognizes the importance and value in keeping our city beautiful. And I'd like to call on, um, three members of the committee to come up and assist handing out the awards. I'd like to ask AJ Hayes, Hilda Zamora and Gloria Magame. Thank you. Okay, and, um, Mary Arias and Lupe Placentia also are here. Thank you. Okay, I have a slideshow with all of the winners, um, and I'll start with the business winners. Of Golden Springs Development and we have Bay Lingell accepting the award. Thank you. The next winner is West Stricks International. We have Steve Kenny accepting the award. Thank you. Our next winner is Nefab Packaging Company. Our next one is Fry Steel Company. La Feel Manufacturing. CJI Process Systems. Anheuser-Busch. And Azar Event Center, and we have Sandra Reyes accepting the award. The next winner is Unifar Solutions. And the next winner is La Chef Bakery. La Chef Bakery with Driss, accepting the award. Our last two winners are Oilwell Service Company and Moon Equipment Company. Now I have the residential winners. We have one, one, seven, three, three Roma Street, Amelia Garcia and Rudy Caldana. The next winner is one, one, six, one, eight Sunglow Street with Larry and Olga Moreno. Next winner is one, nine, one, excuse me, nine, one, three, one Corby Avenue. Nine, two, four, two Pioneer Boulevard. Nine, seven, four, six Hartley Avenue. One, one, five, five, three Jocelyn Street. And one, oh, one, four, nine Orin Day Road. That's Gil and Sonia Verdugo. 10218 Longworth Avenue. Laura Velez is here to accept the award. 10632 Harvest Avenue. 11458 Darcy Street. Okay, I'm sorry. 11247 Ringwood Avenue, David and Julie Garcia. And our final winner, 10916 Maidstone Avenue, Lori and Nabar Harce. Yeah, that was the last one. Thank you.
I'd like to thank our committee that picked these beautiful homes. Can you give them a round of applause? Also, I'd like to say that the women right there are all Women's Club members that have been on our committees, working diligently for years. So thank you so much, ladies. And AJ, I'm sorry, but you're not a Women's Club member, but he has been on committees for numerous years, and I'd like to say thank you to AJ Hayes. Thank you. All right, we're item number 14. I would like to call upon City Manager Ray Cruz.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Like to pull up a slide here. This past Thursday, July 14th, the city hosted an employee appreciation ice cream social. The Hawaiian theme made it festive and a fun event. I want to give special recognition to Priscilla Marino, Executive Assistant to the City Council and City Manager, for organizing the event and making all our employees feel like VIPs. So I wasn't able to make it, but everybody had a great time from what I heard. I'd next would like to bring Jesse Surratt from, do you have anything to share with Public Works?
Yeah, I have two brief items. Lake Center Athletic Park, pavement repairs. You can see in the slide there, our city crews went out, they did pull the bricks, recompacted, added sand and rock base to level those out, and they did that at eight different areas of the park. The next item is notification that Smith Avenue road closure at the railroad tracks, basically between Pioneer and Norwalk, with railroad tracks across Smith. That is closed for a pipeline installation. They're jacking and boring underneath the tracks. So that is scheduled to be closed from July 18th through September. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Now Director of Planning Wayne Moro.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council, I have one item briefly, please. Next slide, please. Just want to let everybody know about a groundbreaking ceremony for the whole child, which will be on Wednesday, August 3rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the intersection of Lakeland Road and Laurel Avenue. And you will be getting flyers in the mail if you haven't already gotten an invitation. But just a quick reminder as to what the project entails. Next slide, please. So this is success housing, successor-owned property. And at that location, you have a housing proposal that consists of three different groups. The Richmond group, which will be building 102 units of apartments with a clubhouse. You have the whole child, which is the focus of my presentation today, and they will be building 19 transitional supportive housing. And you have Habitat for Humanity, which will be building 18 for sale unit. Next slide, please. And outlined in red is where the Richmond group and the whole child will be building their housing proposal. And to the east of that, in yellow, that's where Habitat for Humanity will be building their for-sale units. Next slide, please. This is just an overall site plan to illustrate the three different components. Could you just click? Not change the slide, but okay. So this first area, this is for the Richmond group. That's a four-story building, and that will be for senior, all affordable. Next click, please. The other area, that is also for the Richmond group, but that will be two apartment buildings consisting of 52 units and a clubhouse. And the last component, which is for the groundbreaking on August 3rd, is for the whole child. And it's important to note that this type of housing is the only such housing in the region. Typically, you have homeless housing for families or adults, but this is for children and families. So that's rather unique in this area, and it's one of a kind. And next slide, please. And this shows you what the eventual development will consist of with the whole child being on the southeast corner, and the Richmond group on the western portion of the site. Last slide, please. And this is a perspective from the street. This will be housing that we have not seen in this region, rather unique, and there will be, again, groundbreaking. The groundbreaking is scheduled for August 3rd, and then on August 4th, that's when they will actually start the grading. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Now Director of Police Services, Dino Torres.
Sure, I have one item before I call up Captain Reese to do a report on the ALPRs, the Flock system. Next, well, two weeks, August 5th, we'll be working with Community Services. They're going to have their last concert in the park over at Heritage Park, and I believe it'll be a mariachi event. We're joining forces with them, and we're going to be having our national night out that day from 5:00 to 8:00. And so we look forward to that. Again, that'll be, I think, two weeks, if I look at it, two, three weeks, August 5th at Heritage Park. We have, our police will be there, fire, other community support will be there. So we look forward to having that event. Now I'll call up Captain Reese, who will do a brief report on the ALPR system. Thank you.
Thank you, Dino. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. I just wanted to give you a brief update as far as the ALPRs, the automatic license plate readers that you all approved earlier in the year. We went live with this technology in May, about May 11th of this year. And I know that I've been getting calls from residents, and I'm sure maybe residents have been contacting you as well with some questions as far as what is this specifically? So I just kind of want to give a brief overview of what this is and the tool that we use to take bad people off the street. So an automatic license plate reader is a camera that is throughout the city of Santa Fe Springs at different locations. And what it does is it reads the license plates of vehicles that travel through the city. And what it does is it looks for vehicles that are stolen, that may be wanted with serious felonious crimes, felonies. So it could be a shooting, kidnapping, that type of thing. It also can look through a database for vehicles that might be tied to missing persons. So a lot of times, you know, we might have a loved one who suffers from dementia, and, you know, they go missing. That plate can be entered into the database, and so if it passes through, and it alerts our dispatch center, dispatch center then alerts a police officer who's on patrol. He responds to the area, he or she responds to the area, and looks for that vehicle. So if they see the vehicle, then they obviously attempt to stop the vehicle, and it's been very successful. Since May, we have made 14 arrests. Many of those have been stolen vehicles, so we've returned those vehicles to their rightful owners. But also in those vehicles, we found narcotics, guns, weapons. On at least two or three occasions, we have come across vehicles that had been tied to serious crimes outside of our city. So on one occasion, there was a vehicle that was wanted in relation to a kidnapping, and another one that was related to a shooting. So in those cases, those suspects were detained, and the local agency that was responsible for that investigation was contacted, and those folks were arrested as well. I think some of the concerns that we get is, is this like using facial recognition? It does not do that. It is simply looking at the license plate. It does not look at who's driving the car. That data is compared to state data. So, you know, other police agencies enter the information in for, you know, wanted vehicles or stolen vehicles. That's all that it is looking for, excuse me, looking for. And that data is purged after 30 days. So it doesn't just stay in this cloud, the secured server. It's protected, it's encrypted, and after 30 days, period of time, that goes away. They're not surveillance cameras, like I said. Let's see. The other thing it can do is it can also assist with ongoing investigations. So if we have limited information, but we know that, you know, a certain vehicle was tied to a certain crime in a certain area, we can do a search for that and look for that specific vehicle, and try and put the pieces of the puzzle together to find out who perpetrated that crime. So that is kind of like, we've only been online for a couple of months, and it's been highly successful. So, you know, I just want to thank you all for your commitment to public safety, because we've obviously got these installed in Santa Fe Springs, and they're working quite well. So. Any questions?
How many cameras do we have with the license plate reader?
We have 20 throughout the city of Santa Fe Springs.
And how many more are we purchasing?
Oh, we haven't, like, I guess, had discussions with City Manager and Dino Torres, Police Services. But we can, we're in talks about as far as adding possibly some more throughout the city.
Especially the focal points when they're coming into our city.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, to answer the councilman's question, so we, yeah, we're going to look exactly at those points every, so no one can come into this town without being hit by one of those. So that's our goal, and that's the number we want to purchase.
Thank you so much, and thank you for letting our residents know about these cameras. Dino, thank you for all your services too. Our Captain Reese, by the way, does a great job protecting us. His staff does a great job. So I just wanted to tell him, thank you for serving our community. Yes.
Thank you, Captain. And now like our Fire Chief, Brent Hayward.
Thank you, Ray, Madam Mayor, Council, and those in attendance. I just wanted to give an update on an incident that we had last week on July 15th, 11:30 p.m. in the evening on the southbound 5 freeway at Rosecrans that involved an accident with one of our vehicles. So if I could get the first slide. That's our Engine 83 that covers the south end of our town, responds on the 5 and the 605 freeway quite a bit. At 11:30 on July 15th, our crews were attending with paramedics to a traffic collision in the right-hand lane of the southbound 5 where Rosecrans comes onto the freeway. When the vehicle was positioned and the guys were working on those persons, the apparatus was hit by a box truck. It's a cargo truck, about 30 feet long. They heard a loud boom. The truck stopped about 200 yards down the freeway. The individual took a quick look and decided they didn't want to stop. So that's an active investigation going on with the CHP right now. But luckily, in this incident, everybody was safe. If I could get the next slide, I'll show you some of the positioning of the apparatus, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, because people always ask, why do we park certain ways? Why do we take up lanes of freeway? Why are you slowing me down? But I'll explain to you in a second as to why we do that, procedures and policies that are in place, that have been put in place, because many, many people over many, many years have been killed on freeways, but we do have a process. So that's the positioning of the apparatus, taking up the entry lane and the slow lane, and this is immediately after the accident. To the left of that front end, our engineer was about ready to go around to the driver's side of the door when that occurred. Luckily, he was not struck. So we're thankful for that. Next slide. Just some of the damage. Luckily, it's mostly cosmetic. That fender is about a quarter inch thick, and you can see on the left-hand side how it was, the term I like to use is tacoed. Some of the emergency lighting was stripped. A mirror was taken completely off the cab, but luckily, there's no bodywork damage. On the lower right-hand side, it looks like, at this point, we may be able to buff that out. So the damage for an apparatus of that value is relatively minor. So that's what we have. So that's the bad news. The good news, next slide. The good news is nobody was injured, and that's because of procedures that are put in place. And if you look at the apparatus placement, we usually park behind these incidents, and we park them at angles so that the guy on the right-hand side, he's the apparatus operator, he's operating hose lines and valving. He's in a position of safety. The apparatus is pointed to an angle to where if it is hit, it moves to the right, or it moves to the left, depending on what is going on. Putting it straight behind an incident would put us in a bad position, because hit by a big rig, that rig would go straightforward into our scene. So there is a technique that we use. We practice it often. Everybody on the apparatuses are their own safety officer, and we don't stop, we don't position, and we don't get out of the rigs until everybody feels comfortable. It's not always comfortable on a freeway, but luckily, good news for us, everybody's good. The apparatus should be repaired shortly. Next slide. Just wanted to pass along that a few weeks ago, a young lady representing LA County Department of Public Health came to City Hall to present an award of appreciation to the department for its efforts and management during the COVID-19 pandemic, which apparently is still going on. While everyone's efforts here in the city, here within city management, here within our council, within the residents, we applaud everybody's efforts. They just wanted to highlight our Santa Fe Springs Fire Rescue for the assistance in the initial vaccination process and working with the county to help facilitate the vaccination of the very first 9,500 firefighters within the region during this crisis. to help facilitate the vaccination of the very first ninety-five hundred firefighters within the region during this crisis. Department of Health Services and their vaccination sites are here within that city. So we helped assist with the region to get the first wave of individuals vaccinated. While we're not here at the City Hall to receive the certificate, honorary Fire Chief Debbie Ford from Human Services was. So we appreciate her receiving the certificate that's signed by Dr. Barbara Ferrera and Director Moon Tu Davis from Department Health Services. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. And I'm very proud of our department because where other departments throughout the county were being crippled with non-vaccinated firefighters, we were at ninety-plus percent, which was unheard of. So thank you for your leadership, Chief. And now Travis Hickey, Finance Director.
Thank you, Ray. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Just three quick items here. Last week, I, along with two of my staff, attended a luncheon of finance officers. And the speaker was Michael Coleman, who's a recognized leader in local government finances, the Fiscal Policy Director for the League of California Cities. So he provided an update on the state budget and, and local finance issues. And, you know, two things I found interesting, I wanted to share that the, he was talking about the election results from the June election. And, and this year, they're with the mail-in votes were so overwhelmingly greater than in past elections that they were still counting them three and four weeks after the election. And there were actually three local ballot measures that initially were indicated as, as a fail the night of the election, but changed to pass once the, all of the absentee ballots were, were counted. He also talked about the, what's being called the inflation rebate. And so this is a state program to get money in California residents' pockets. It's also been called the middle-class tax refund. And so individuals, depending on your income level, will receive a rebate from two hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars, double that for married individuals. And then also you can get two hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars if you have at least one dependent. So, but it does go up to, you know, single people making up to two hundred and fifty thousand, married people making up to five hundred thousand. So covers vast majority of Americans. So also wanted to let the council know, we have our auditors on site this week doing their interim audits. So this is the first phase of the audit. They'll be back in October, November to do the final audit. And, and then lastly, I want to ask Alvaro Castellan, our Senior Budget Analyst, to come up and talk about our, the Pamentis, our online water bill system, which is now active.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As Travis mentioned, in partnership with Pamentis, we began accepting payments on June twenty-third for water utility bills online and by phone, using debit cards, credit cards, ACH, or by linking PayPal, Venmo, or Amazon Pay accounts. I'd also like to highlight that the service is free of charge for our residents and water customers. Next slide, please. So we've seen a lot of activity on the portals since launching on June twenty-third. There have been about two hundred and one transactions completed. One hundred and eighty-six of them, or ninety-two percent, were done online. Ten of them, or five percent, were done through the phone payment system. Six of them, or about three percent, were done as part of scheduled payments. And the portal is accessible through our city website and through the GoSFS app. I wanted to provide also the council a very brief walkthrough on the portal. You'll see it's a very intuitive and easy-to-use tool. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this is the landing page of the portal. Residents and customers would use the right-hand side if they want to register and have an account with Pamentis. They would click on the left-hand side if they only want to make a one-time payment in three easy steps without needing to register. It's just providing the account number, their credit or debit card information, and confirming. And I'll go ahead and walk you through the, the portal that requires a registration. Next slide, please. So once you, you log on, this is a screen that you would see. You'll see where it asks, basically, when you, when you log in, there's several features on the left. As soon as you log in, the first thing that it'll ask you for is your account number. You type in the account number, and then the next process or the next step in the payment is to bring up your actual bill. Next step, please. And actually, sorry, to go back to the previous slide. One thing that I'd like to highlight, if somebody doesn't know their account, we've provided our bill image on the right-hand side where it identifies where somebody can find their account. Next slide, please. So once they verify their account, they can make the payment under the pay my bill option. They can decide to make the payment now or to schedule it for a later date. Next slide. After they click continue, it takes them to a, it takes the resident or the water customer to a confirmation screen to proceed. Next slide. And once the payment is approved, they receive a receipt as well as an email of the action that they've done. Next slide, please. And the auto pay feature has similar steps, and this is to have the payments automatically charged on the date the bill is due. Again, once it's confirmed, the residents receive a digital receipt as well as an email confirmation. There are other features that you see on the left-hand side there. Bill history shows all the bills associated with the account as of June twenty-third. Payment history shows the actual payments that were made. And the My Wallet feature is where someone can store their debit or credit card information and go through an even easier process to make a payment. And the last feature, My Profile, is where somebody can make changes to their payments account. And as you can see, it's a very easy-to-use portal, and the community is using it as well. So with that, this concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alvaro. And I'm Marisa Badres, Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Ray. Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council, and the audience. I have two reports to share with you this evening. Since nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty-five, America has celebrated July as Parks and Rec Recreation Month. The goal is to raise awareness of the essential services that park and recreation professionals provide to communities across the United States. The city's Community Services Department invites the community to celebrate Parks and Rec Month at Los Nietos Park on Thursday, July twenty-first, from five to eight in the evening. The waiting pool will be open in the evening time, and there will be free hot dogs, games, and music for our residents to enjoy. All our older adults, fifty-plus, are invited to bring their grandchildren to the Gus Vlasco Neighborhood Center on Friday, July the twenty-ninth, from two to four in the afternoon, filled with carnival games, prizes, and fun. Snacks will also be available for purchase. And if you want more information or to register for the free event, residents can call the Gus Vlasco Neighborhood Center. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, that ends our executive team reports.
Thank you. And now we have item number fifteen, Appointments to Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Councilmember Mora.
None tonight.
Mayor Protem Zamora.
None tonight.
And none for me. And now we're items number sixteen, Council Comments. Oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, we have Delia and Horacio Guterres. I would like you to come up so that we can give you recognition for your beautiful home. And let's give her a round of applause. All right, we will make this fast. I know it's a long evening. It's fairly eight o'clock, but anyway. Item number sixteen, Council Comments. We're going to go to Councilmember Mora. I think he's asleep.
Sorry. It's been a long night. I'll make mine really quick. I'm sorry we left, but, you know, we want to continue to work hard to, you know, do the best that we can, live up to our model, a great place to live, work, and play for the community and as well as our residents. We're going to, people are made so, they're not here, trees are coming down. It just gives us a little bit of time, and we hear you. So we're going to do what we have to do to get, to make life better on that street. And also just really quick, I'm going to be attending JPA Board of Directors meeting tomorrow, and I will report out when I come back at our next meeting. Looking forward for the block party this Saturday. And the housing project that's coming up on Laurel. So that's going to be great for our community. And I think, as Wayne said, we're leading, it's, it's the forefront. You know, we're taking the lead on this one, and hopefully other communities will follow to help out the homeless and less fortunate when it comes to housing. That's all I have. Thank you for being here, and good night.
And our Mayor Protem Zamora.
I think I said a lot earlier in the meeting, so you guys probably. I just want to thank my staff, you know, just for the, the work, the efforts. I mean, our experts, the different individuals that we, we've hired just to make sure that they gave, they give us the tools to make the best decision possible for, for our city. Of course, our residents, thank you for coming out and putting in your time and effort into our beautiful city. And also our business community, you know, we do appreciate you guys. And, you know, today, we may, you know, disagree to agree. And either way, you know, we, we have to move forward, and we'll go from there. All right, you guys take care, God bless, and have a great night.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Zamora. And I just want to say that I went to that ice cream social, so did our Mayor Protem Zamora. I want, I wanted to thank the staff that put that together, especially Priscilla Moreno. I don't know, some of our residents don't know her, but she's a, she worked so hard to bring up morale in, in the City Hall. And I just wanted to thank her so much. And Raylene and Maribel, thank you. I see that you, everybody was all festive with their Hawaiian gear on. And, you know, we, we were ready to rock and roll. So speaking of rock and roll, we have a concert this Friday that is actually going to be playing rock and roll. And I'd like to see all of you there. You know, you're never too young or too old to get out there and just dance. I, I've seen Janie and Gilbert, they were at the Fourth of July Dance with me. So let's just do it, all right? And I would like to thank Alvaro for the, the instructions on the water bill, on how to do it online. I know that Thomas pays the water bill, so he's going to have to learn how to do that. Okay, go take some classes. I want to thank Kathy Fink at the, she's our secretary at the Rotary. I went to the Rotary meeting today. Great meeting, I love you guys so much. Rotarians are awesome. And I want to thank our Women's Club, Santa Fe Springs Women's Club. You are especially awesome. These ladies do so much for us, and I just wanted, it was a busy day for us, right, ladies? We do so much in the community, and I want to thank you for that. Chief, thank you for showing us how, why you turn that truck and you stop traffic. It's for safety, right? But thank you, now we know. You know, we learn something every day. We learn when we come to our council meetings. So I just want to thank you and have a blessed evening. Thank you, A.J., and thank you to Hilda Zamora. She's our school board member. Thank you for everything that you guys do, and thank you for being here. Have a nice evening. And I would like to adjourn this meeting.